I'll call the meeting to order and turn it over to the city clerk.
Our first order of business tonight is to administer the oath of office to the newly elected mayor and city council members. If I could have the mayor and her family, please join me at the podium and I will administer the oath of office.
My family.
A lovely family.
He wanted to bring the dog, too.
If you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duties of the office of mayor.
For the city of Port Huron.
The city of Port Huron.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
If I could have the three council members that were just elected come forward. And if you have family members that want to be behind you for support. Why don't I have you stand up there, too? Okay, council members, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of council member.
The duties of the office of council member.
For the city of Port Huron.
For the city of Port Huron.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Let me just say I have the blue book for everybody to sign at the end of the meeting, so if you could remember to stop here and sign the book.
Or you can pass it down and then they can pass it down during the meeting.
Maybe I'll leave it to the mayor.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
You will be the last one signing this book, because I have no more sheets left.
Do you want to do the roll first and then?
I'm going to call my own roll.
I know, but you can call the roll.
Mayor Rep, can I just say something here before we get started, as the agenda was already prepared before I just got to be sworn in for the seat real quick? I have two things I just want to make sure to say. I would like to, as a newly elected, I'd like to recognize Alfonso Amos for representing me and serving on city council. He truly represented the best interests of the people of Port Huron. And I also wanted to make sure to recognize everybody that was in the six candidates for city council. Alfonso Amos, Gary Stolt, Terry Lamb, Sherri Archibald, and Ken Harris, and also Mayor Pauline Rep, and Aldi Windowski, and Arthur Payne, that stepped up to serve and offered to serve and represent our city, our great city, our residents, our taxpayers, and that they all should be very, very proud, and their families should be very proud, of what a positive message they did on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a little reversed on the agenda, but I believe we should take the roll call first, so if the clerk would please do that.
Councilmember Archibald, here. Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Councilmember Warden.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here.
We now at the point for the appointment of the mayor pro tem. The city charter reads as follows. At the first regular meeting after each city general election, the city council shall appoint one of its selected members to serve as mayor pro tem. The charter mandates no specific criteria for selecting this person. Nominations are now in order for the office of mayor pro tem for the city of Port Huron.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Ruiz.
I would like to place the name of Sherri Archibald for mayor pro tem.
Thank you. Is there any other nominations?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I would like to offer a nomination needed, Ashford.
Thank you. Is there any other nominations?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes, out of respect for Aldi Windowski, who offered to step up and serve as mayor in this recent campaign, I would like to nominate Aldi Windowski.
Thank you.
I would deny that, please.
You would like to deny that? Is there any other nominations? We're going to run out of people pretty soon. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? If not, then the nominations for the office of mayor pro tem are now closed. As there are more than one, the clerk will pass out slips of paper that will be used as a ballot you are to write on there, who you're casting your vote for, either councilmember Archibald or councilmember Ashford. And the clerk will come back and pick them up.
Yeah.
Just fold them up and.
I give somebody, too?
Yeah, you did.
I give you.
There you go.
Did Alan decline? Go get the vote in.
Yes, he did.
The results of the balloting is there are four votes for Anita Ashford and three votes for Sherri Archibald. So the clerk will now administer the oath of office to councilmember Ashford as mayor pro tem.
That'll work.
No, you're fine.
Do you have anything to add? Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of mayor pro tem.
The duties of office of mayor pro tem.
For the city of Port Huron.
For the city of Port Huron.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember Ruiz.
Congratulations, Anita.
Thank you.
And may I also thank Sherri Archibald for the number of years that she served very effectively as our mayor pro tem. And you've made our city proud by doing so and any time that you had to step up and sit in for the mayor. But thank you, Sherri.
Thank you. Mayor Rep.
Mayor Rep.
I would also like to congratulate Anita on her new appointment.
Thank you.
And thank you all for the past two nominations or appointments that I've held, and it was my pleasure.
Mayor Rep, I'd just like to echo councilmember Ruiz. Sherri, I think you did a wonderful job, and I look forward to, I don't believe in fill-in shoes, we have to just do our own thing, and so thank you for all that you've done for the city of Port Huron.
Thank you.
Well, I'd also like to echo that, because I can honestly say that any time I've had to call Sherri to take my spot, she's been there even if it meant altering her own schedule, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep, I'd like to just say, as I'm new here, I actually think that this group is a very good representation for representing all the city of Port Huron. We represent all, not certain wards or precincts. And I think together, we're going to be able to hopefully really work together and get this, get the city, support the city going in the right direction. And thank you, Sherri Archibald, for serving as mayor pro tem in your previous two terms.
With that, we will move on. We have minutes from the last meeting of October the 24th. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Well, we got you both in joints, so.
I'll support it. She can move it.
Councilmember Archibald, mayor pro tem, Ashford. Is there any additions, deletions, changes? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We're now to public hearings, however. The clerk does have an announcement here, so.
Public hearing number one is being pulled at this time by administration. We have found another potential owner to the home, so that we need to give them proper notice. The mayor has also allowed me a moment, an opportunity to say thank you. You know, we did have the election last week, and I want to say thank you to the nine polling locations that we use throughout the city. They step up to the plate, they don't charge us, they assist us with setting up, and without them, and the disruption that happens during the 13 hours, 13-plus hours that we're there is really appreciated. I also want to say thank you to the 80-plus election workers. That includes our delivery personnel, city workers, department heads, and especially my staff, Cindy and Kelsey. I have to say thank you. Sorry.
It's all right.
Elections cannot run without these people. They're a talented group of individuals. It takes knowledge, patience, and efficiency to run elections in these individuals, as they always do, did an outstanding job. Wow, I didn't think I'd get emotional. Like I said, it's impossible to conduct successful elections without this entire group, and I want to, on behalf of the city, and more importantly, on behalf of myself, I want to extend my thanks for a job well done. It's a tough day, and they did an outstanding job, and very efficient they were this year. So thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
I guess.
And you were my person when I was in your role, so I know the feeling.
It's a tough day, but we did it, and it's fun. It's good to have another one under our belt.
We will move on. Public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening? If you do, please come forward, give us your name. You have four minutes. Seeing no one, I'll declare public comment closed. Move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashford, is there a second? Support. Councilmember Archibald. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. The items on the consent agenda, received and filed notification from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission that an application has been received to transfer ownership to the Press Room LLC, and transfer location of a Class C license from 330 Quay to 911 Military Street. Received and filed notification that William E. Smith has been reappointed by the city manager to the Port Huron Housing Commission with a term to expire December 19th, 2021. Approved corrections to, from the city manager, 16-039 for amendments to the 2015-16 budget year-end adjustments. Recommend that the Michigan Liquor Control Commission approve above all others the application of DAZAR LLC, 511 Fort Street, formerly known as the Fog Cutter, for a Class C license pursuant to Public Act 501 of 2006. Confirmed and approved single lot special assessments for the cost of sidewalk replacement in the right-of-way. Confirmed the mayor's appointment of Sherri Smith and Evan Wilkins to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority with terms to expire April 14th, 2019, and gave the second reading and enactment of an ordinance to repeal Chapter 12 Businesses, Article 15, Tattoo Establishments of the Port Huron Code of Ordinances. We'll go back then to, from the city manager, number one. If the clerk would please read that.
Accepting the bid from Signature Ford Lincoln in the amount of $80,028 for three 2017 Ford Interceptor utility vehicles for use by the police department.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Harris.
I guess just one question. I just talked briefly to Lenny before the meeting here, and, you know, we've been really successful the last few times in giving a number of bidders, and this time, the bidders went from eight or nine down to basically two. And I understand one of the local bidders that had participated has withdrawn their participation, and I just hope that we can do better next time to get some bidders. And there's nothing wrong with our process, it's, I guess it's just something that happens, and I liked it a lot better when we had numerous bidders, so. But Lenny, keep up, good job.
Any other?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember Warden.
Just a quick question. Are these replacing some units, and what's going to happen to the units that you're replacing?
Councilman, yes, they are replacing vehicles that are getting close or have exceeded the mileage allotment, generally around 100,000, sometimes over, sometimes a little under. But they may not be put out to pasture just yet. We'll evaluate those vehicles at the end. Lenny's crew will take a look at them. We have other cars that are still on the fleet that have much higher mileages and doing other duties. They just cannot be utilized for police work, pursuit rate, pursuit rate of vehicles.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
From the city manager, number two.
Is accepting the bid from Fountains Custom Interiors in the amount of $23,814 for municipal office center carpet replacement in the public meeting room.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Harris.
Just, I'd like to compliment Lenny again. I was always kind of challenged when it comes in, and we had three bidders, and two of them were really close, and one was way off. But when we're talking commercial carpet, anybody that's ever looked for carpet, it's really a task. But Lenny and the engineering department come through and give us really a detailed look at what we're getting, and I think we're going to be ending up being the winners in this project, so thank you again, Len.
I understand, too, that it was considerably under budget.
Yes.
What was it, budget 40,000?
Madam Mayor, the budget number that was approved was 30,000.
30,000, okay. So we did. And it's been a long time coming to have this replaced, because it's the original carpeting for.
Yes, ma'am, 40 years.
Yes. Long time.
Oh, Lenny, oh, okay. Are there any special features to this one? I know you sent us, but I didn't have time to open it, some more details. Anything special about this piece of carpet?
Well, ma'am, we wanted a carpet that was as long-lasting as possible, although the warranty is 10 years. And it turns out that the two lowest bidders were bidding essentially on the same carpet, which is a commercial-grade carpet. And it's very durable, and we are able, we're going to have to essentially move all of the chairs that are bolted to the floor away so that we can remove this carpet, put the new carpet down, then put the chairs back.
Oh, okay.
And a great chunk of the cost of this carpet is actually the labor to install it.
And then the longevity of it, the estimated time?
Well, the commercial carpet has a normal lifespan, is about 10 years.
Oh, okay.
However, this carpet has been here for 40.
40, yeah.
And it's getting a little ratty, and it's getting a little dangerous. We're getting reports of trips and falls. We occasionally have to come in and repair it. We'd be very happy to have new carpet.
How long will the project take, seeing as you have to take out all the chairs?
About a week and a half to two weeks.
It's not bad.
From inception.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
One of the things in planning as well is it's anticipated that we only have one meeting in December, and that provide them time to take out all of the chairs, and so if they run over, then that provides this little cushion of window of time. Mayor Rep, since it is my first meeting here, number one, what color is it going to be?
That's a very good question, sir.
And the second thing is, I just want to say, having three local businesses be the, submit bids, I think it's great for us to have the local business owners be involved in these type of things, and keep reaching out to them to participate in this.
Yes, sir, we do. The answer to your first question is that it's a very good question.
Obviously, has not been chosen.
Madam Mayor, we will, we will work with staff to pick a color, like in the lobby color. Ran it by like 40 people, and came to a neutral color. It most likely will not be the same color.
I hope not.
Guaranteed.
You can guarantee it.
Lenny, do you have your calendar with you? I asked Lenny to provide 24 months of history. One of the things is why I would like people to understand is, this is not the city council chamber, this is a public meeting room, which is used by dozens of groups. Yep, just passing on. Here you have a calendar of all the different groups who use this room, everyone from the Chamber of Commerce to nonprofits to civic groups. We make this room readily available as a community room, so I wanted that calendar to be passed on, just so you could see the vast, many groups who use this room. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember.
Lenny, where has the carpet been repaired? I guess I didn't notice any rips in it or anything.
I'm sorry.
Where has the carpet been repaired? I haven't noticed any major rips or anything.
In the, in the back, and then the sides.
Right here, on this step here, I was walking down from this step, and the seam ripped, and I fell down the stairs. It was repaired right here in front, it was reglued as well.
If there's no other discussion, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
We'll move on to resolutions. Number one, please.
It's authorizing 13 payments.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
I was waiting for a second, I have.
Oh, yeah, no, I was waiting for a second also. Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you, councilmember Ruiz. And you have a question, mayor pro tem, Ashford?
Yes, not a question, but I would like to divide this according to Robert's rule. You have a DTE, DTE payment on here, and I'd like to vote for it all, except for that one.
Yeah, so you want it staying from payment number?
Staying from 1 through 11.
Of number 111.
Yeah, 1, yeah, 1 through 11.
111.
Yeah, 111, yeah.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Mayor Rep, is, these are all contracts that have already gone through or have been awarded prior?
Correct.
That these are just the performing services, and these are payments along with the contract?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions? Because we can split this up, then the vote would be on items 111 through 110, and then again, 112 and 13 will be taken together, and item 111 will be taken by itself.
So, go ahead, Sue.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
And this is on which one?
This is 1 through 10, and then 12 and 13.
Yes, yes. Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, and now it'll be on item 11.
Madam Mayor, on the DTE bill, just to point out as well, this was for the contract. We expect, one, a rebate from DTE as well for the rebate that we're given, I think it was $137,000. Also, as well, we've been informed by DTE, they actually finished installation a couple months ago, and there will be a refund check of about $70,000 to account for the LED savings when it was originally installed. So it takes, when they install everything, they go back and verify, it takes a couple months, and then they'll refund that difference. And so we are seeing significant savings as planned. And our budget called for installation to be done. The budget savings we had predicted called for the savings to be done by November, so those additional months of savings will be budget savings in the end. They got it done earlier than we expected.
That's good. Thank you. We will vote on item 111.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
No.
Council, oh, you're abstaining.
Are you abstaining or no?
Abstaining, well, no, yeah.
Abstaining.
Abstaining, okay.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
We'll move on to item 2 under resolutions.
Approving the Michigan Municipal Aid Box Alarm System, interlocal agreement between participating political subdivisions to secure emergency support during an emergency disaster or other serious threat to public health and safety.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashford, is there a second? Councilmember Archibald. Could we have a little explanation?
Sure. Mayor, councilmembers, as part of the emergency management team for the city of Port Huron, this is a state-of-Michigan-based mutual aid plan between multiple entities, basically on the fireside. And what this does would help us mitigate large incidents, such as, or tornado, or large downtown fire, an incident similar to the DTF fire recently, or the fire in Yale, those types of things. Where we may need multiple types of resources far outside our normal partners, which would exist in St. Clair County. And those people that belong to this interlocal agreement, which I think pretty much everybody here is familiar with, interlocal agreements that we have, have this, it's basically a statewide mutual aid system, where we'd be able to draw on specific resources from other entities that provide, are provided in the MABUS agreement. One, I think, that might be especially important for us is Detroit has a boat that has pumping capability, was used at the DTF fire. If we had a fire of such nature in the downtown, they weren't we able to draft readily from the river, we could bring that boat and bring that boat up here, and have to use that boat as a resource, and they're part of the mutual aid. Same token, though, is that we offer our mutual aid capabilities to other communities outside of our general geographical area, St. Clair County area. As an example, we have a rope rescue team, confined space entry team, hazmat team, that do the vast majority of the work in St. Clair County as it is, but those entities may be called to assist in other locations that may not have those resources. It's something that's being pushed by the state of Michigan, it's tied to several grant opportunities, and it's kind of like a blanket layer of insurance. You don't have to buy everything. You have a neighbor, a adjoining community that may have that resource, and you depend upon them in your time of need.
Any questions for the chief? Yes, councilmember Harris.
I'd just like to make a comment. You know, I know this is for a much bigger scale and stuff, but I think the importance of these agreements just happened recently, twice in our neighborhood, with a fire on 12th Street and the fire on Water Street, and two of the communities that come in as backups to help with these large fires and stuff. And I guess this is just, that's a smaller scale of what the chief is talking about, and it's a plus. I mean, it just really is a plus, and the Emergency Action Committee for St. Clair County is just probably the top cohesive group that I've seen in a long time, so. It's, we'll probably be one of the first communities to enact this. It goes to the St. Clair County Fire Chiefs tomorrow night at a meeting, and I always And I always believe that we're the fore-runners, and the people follow as we go. And I'm a believer in it. Sometimes we may, other communities may not have the things that we have. I think because of our size and the county seat, it's incumbent on us to assist them at their time of need. And if we need the help, we can borrow from other communities.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, Ashford.
So who, who are the other parties in this mutual...
Well, they could be, it could be statewide. It's a Michigan mutual-based thing, so we could borrow from Wayne County, anywhere, really, who has those type of resources.
Okay, thank you.
And also have access to governmental resources. Let's say we needed multiple tanker trucks, so we'd get those from Grayling, things of that nature.
Thanks, Mayor.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Warden.
Is there going to be a representative from the city of Port Huron or our area on the board or on the, is there going to be a committee that, when this grows out to other communities statewide, are we going to have some representation on that?
We'll have representation through the local St. Clair County Emergency Management. I sit on the advisory board, as does Ken Harris sits on that board. So I have input on that. I'm also an ultimate for the Desemec, the Fusion Center in Detroit. So I have contacts where I could have input in that. Be honest with you, I don't want one more hat that, for another meeting that I'd have to go to. I think we'll have the access that we need through the different components that are already in place.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Move on to item three.
Is approving the agreement to provide 2014 home funds as a grant in the amount of $64,607.70 to the Port Huron Neighbor Housing Corporation for the purpose of providing permanent housing for low and moderate income families through acquisition, demolition, rehabilitation, resale, and new construction.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Yes, Mayor Rep. Is this the same amount we were allocated last year? Know if it increased or decreased.
Mayor and council, this is in the range of what we were receiving last year.
Oh, okay.
We've seen a slight decrease in the home funds, but we've also seen an increase in the CDBG funds.
Oh, okay, so it kind of just balanced itself out?
Right, and these ones are typically transferred over to the Port Huron Housing Corporation for the rehab work.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mayor Rep.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
David, how come these are 2014? Is it something that expired and we have to use it?
Well, there's a slight lag in how the funding comes into the system, and we're typically about a year to two years behind it and seeing the monies being shifted over into the Housing Corporation.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Warden.
David, how, what's the process from the start of somebody inquiring about this help or assistance to the paperwork or time to when they actually get potentially approved and then have to comply with the completion of it?
Well, these funds are used for rehabilitation of housing projects that the Housing Corporation will purchase a house and then rehab and then resell to a first-time home buyer. Right now, we're working on our third home. The first, we had 3821 Military, that sold to a family of, I believe it was seven in the, in the family. And then we're currently under contract on 1203 Court Street, and we're in the process of finishing off our next home on, yeah, 15th Street.
Thank you.
Any other questions for David or discussion? Thanks. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
That concludes our agenda.[1577.84]